Do you have enough sheets? I forgot all the police and that were coming in.
We're all going to be leaving here anyways. Do you have these paper right here? Can you, when you, right here. This is David's phone number. So we start the meeting if he's calling.
Sergeant, how are you?
Yeah.
So it's nine one seven. Five eight nine, eleven ninety-seven. He's dial nine first.
Okay.
He's just going to be there.
No, okay.
Actually, well, yeah, should be nine one nine one seven.
Nine, I was just going to say nine one, okay.
And then, uh... Will you mute him? Will you mute him?
Yeah, we can mute, right? No, oh, yeah, right there.
Right on, dial, and then mute.
And also, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Jim? Is that working?
All right, uh, good. Are we all set? You guys want to move up?
I just want to make sure I don't...
I'd like to move up.
Jim, sorry, you want to move over? I'm not going to stay in Siberia by yourself, right?
Oh, jeez. Oh, I forgot about David.
Yeah.
Exactly. All right, are we good to go? It's working? Okay, good, all right. Um, thank you, everybody, for being here. Um, adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December 11, 2020. The notice was on that date, posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader in the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. And we are recording tonight. We might have a little glitches on Facebook Live, maybe not, so if anybody's watching, maybe. Um, okay, Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brindle?
Here.
Councilmembers Havgood?
Here.
Parmally?
Here.
Agrippa? Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Contract? Dardia?
Here.
Boys?
Here.
Please rise for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Parmally, and then remain standing for the salute to the flag.
Today, may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs, respectful of our differences, not threatened by them. May we grow in our understanding of our own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. May we be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength, can always find compromise, working together, find a common ground, enable us to move forward with a shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and unites us, focusing on that to banish roadblocks of ego and fear, and may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, good evening, everybody. Uh, before I deliver my remarks, we're going to kick off tonight's meeting with a very special presentation. Um, we are pleased to have a representation, representative of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police here tonight to present a certificate to the Police Department for their accreditation achievement, a first in Westfield's history. In addition, we're going to hear from Police Chief Chris Battaloro, Fire Chief Anthony Tiller, Public Works Director Greg O'Neill, and they're going to publicly recognize members of their departments for their extraordinary work during Storm Ida. So, I think we're trying...
Councilman Contract's on the line.
Councilman Contract is on the line, and Jim's got us emcee this, right? So who's coming up first?
Okay, well, yeah, so let me, uh, let's start this up. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have, as you said, a presentation tonight, a very exciting presentation, um, from Hidalgo and, last name?
O'Meary.
Yes.
Delgado.
Delgado. Hidalgo died from the New Jersey State Plea, uh, Association of Police Chiefs, uh, to present a, uh, certificate to the Westfield Police Department for their achievement of accreditation. So, Hidalgo, come on up and you can make your presentation.
Madam Mayor and Council, I apologize for giving you my back. I'm going to do my best to address the audience as well as...
Of course.
...the council. So, it is indeed my honor, uh, to be here tonight on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police to recognize your police department as one of the best in the nation. And I say that, and I actually bring proof. And that is because, uh, um, uh, tonight, I will present him with a certificate for the achieving accreditation, which puts him in a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that amazes difficult, uh, and rigorous, that have actually, um, made it through this difficult and rigorous process. So, um, if you indulge me for a couple of minutes, I'd like to share with you the significance of the achievement. So, the Westfield Police Department has made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level, which is why, uh, we, we say that is one of the best departments in the, in the, in the nation, because, uh, in, in New Jersey, you have to, uh, adhere to one hundred and twelve standards, which represent best practices not only at the state level, but at the national level. And many of those require multiple, um, uh, proofs of compliance. And so, that is what the Westfield Police Department has actually achieved. And so, this program administered to the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission has helped to transparently demonstrate the professionalism and preparedness of state's law enforcement agencies. The New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Accreditation Program is specifically designed to enhance the professionalism and transparency in the state's public safety system. During these uniquely challenging times, we would agree that with the threat, uh, and the threat to our health and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies to follow standardized practices and policies is a potentially life-saving and cost-effective investment of time and resources. Accreditation gives an agency, so just the, uh, uh, Westfield Police Department, a preparedness plan and verification of excellence. Accredited, accredited status represents a significant professional achievement. Accreditation is a process. The foundation of accreditation lies in the adoption of standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. Accreditation is a progressive and time-proven way of helping law enforcement agencies calculate and improve their overall performances. It is a certification by an independent review and authority, in this case, the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, that the accredited agency was carefully measured against an established set of state and national standards, and in the case of the Westfield Police Department, it many times exceeded the accepted practices in the field of law enforcement. Research shows, and I know members of the public would like to know sometimes what's in it for me, research shows that accredited agencies have eleven percent fewer police professional liability claims, eighteen percent fewer worker compensation claims, and thirty-one percent fewer auto liability claims. Moreover, University Palace and participating male-affiliated joint insurance fund stand to receive substantial insurance premium discounts when their police department attains accreditation. But in addition to these fiscal advantages, there are other important benefits of accreditation. Accredited agencies are better able to defend against lawsuits and citizen complaints. Accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently and meet community needs. An accreditation embodies the precepts of community-oriented policing. It creates a forum in which police and citizens work together to prevent and control challenges confronting law enforcement and provide clear expectations about community expectations. Now, officers in accredited agencies, as I see many here tonight, can take pride that they have been objectively recognized for their professionalism and adherence to the highest standards. Now, before I close, I'd like to share with you that after the rigorous process, there's what we call an onsite assessment, and that's when the agency needs to actually prove that they meet all the standards of the one hundred and twelve standards of our accreditation program. And there's a report written that is forwarded up as part of the eventual recommendation of our agents to receive accreditation. I'll just simply quote from the report, or paraphrase. "The agency has gone to great lengths to ensure the integrity of its property evidence function, including upgrading its physical plan and contracting with an outside entity for its evidence audits and inspections." Very important point. Under the leadership of Chief Christopher Battalora, the high level of competence, leadership, and professionalism is evident within the agency. Officers are forward-thinking and engaged in self-improvement. Now, the members of the Westfield Police Department, both sworn and civilian, are committed to its fundamental mission, which is to protect life and property, enforce the law in a fair and impartial manner, and preserve the peace, order, and safety of its community it serves. And what, what makes this even more remarkable is the fact that it was done through a pandemic, and they did not lose sight of basically what their challenges and objectives were. So, as they face the unique challenges to a public health crisis, they are steadfast on assessing the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the agency's budget, they need to select, train, and prepare officers and employees to provide for the uninterrupted continuity of specialized functions essential to the agency's operations and the creation of a vision for the future of the agency through the development of strategic plan to include realistic, achievable, and measurable short-term, midterm, and long-term goals. Lotable. So, in closing, I'd say that it is the opinion of the assessment team that the Westfield Police Department is a highly professional and committed agency, which exemplifies all of the tenants of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. Another remarkable thing is, when we come in doing that assessment, there are typically things that may have been overlooked, and so, we discuss them, and sometimes they get settled during this final assessment. For an agency, in their first attempt, as the Westfield Police Department went through it, this first time, for us not to find anything whatsoever is truly remarkable. So they found, we found no issues whatsoever, uh, during our final assessment and after the, uh, process. So therefore, it is indeed my, my honor tonight, on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission, to congratulate Chief Christopher Battalora, Chief, I apologize, Battalora, I did practice. Accreditation Manager Frank Patavano, the members of the Westfield Police Department, the mayor, the council, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for achieving state accreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies that have made this important commitment to excellent policing. So to all, indeed, congratulations.
I'd, uh, I'd just like to say a few words. When I became chief three years ago, this was my number-one priority. I think the town of Westfield deserves a professional police force, and to me, accreditation signifies professionalism. This was a, a midterm goal for me, something that I expected to, uh, achieve within three to six years, and, and we did it within sixteen months, um, which is absolutely spectacular. A tremendous accomplishment for me professionally and prefer, you know, personally, but more so, an accomplishment for all the officers that are here in this room and, and the civilian staff. This, this required efforts from every single member of our department. Some went above and beyond, um, and I'd, I'd just like to, you know, uh, uh, signal them out and, and let them know how appreciative I am of this. First and foremost is our accreditation manager, Frank Patavano. Uh, this was all encompassing, uh, an all encompassing task for him for the last two years. And, uh, believe me, um, you know, how he didn't, uh, pack up and, and walk out and quit, I don't know, but I'm, I'm very thankful that he's still here. And it would not be possible unless there was, um, you know, a unified command staff here, and I'm very thankful to Captain Resurka here for buying into what we are attempting to accomplish here and, and facilitating the process. And there are also two members of this department that I think need to be signaled out as well. Uh, first is Officer Paul Ferry, who, um, you know, when you go through this process, it's not enough to say you're going to do something, you have to provide proofs of compliance with that. And Officer Ferry was, uh, you know, vital and instrumental in providing those proofs of compliance, um, and, uh, you know, another, another person that this could not have been done without. And also is our IT technician and, uh, our social media manager, Dominic Sandelli. Um, he has his hands in everything in the police department, uh, including, um, us seeking accreditation, and this is also a process that would not have been possible without him. A tremendous experience for us. I thank Mr. Delgado for being here tonight. We had a conversation before we, we came up here, um, and it's on to our next project here. Um, we are, are moving forward with accrediting our emergency communication center, um, and hopefully will be one of just a handful of agencies in the state of New Jersey that can boast both its law enforcement agency and its emergency communication center as being accredited by the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police. And our IT technician, Dominic Sandelli, and our assistant accreditation manager, Paul Ferry, are going to lead us through that process, and hopefully we'll be back up here in a couple of months, accepting, uh, another recognition from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police. But rest assured, um, this would not have been possible, uh, unless there's support from the governing body. And, and Mayor Brindle, you have been a tremendous supporter of this department. I thank you, um, for everything. Uh, Mr. Gilde, likewise, I thank you for your tremendous support. And also, I'd like to just, you know, to say you're going to do something and then to actually do it are two things. This required significant infrastructure upgrades. We've put forth some very significant budgets over the last couple of years. Councilwoman Havgood, I thank you for helping us find a way for, pay for those upgrades. Um, it would not have been possible unless the funds were there. So, for you and your finance committee, thank you so much for helping us accomplish this. And also to Councilman Dardia, who is the chairperson of our Public Safety Committee, we've met many times to discuss the progress of this project, and I'm happy to tell you, we, we achieved it, and we achieved it well within our targeted deadline. So, thank you so much. I thank all the officers who showed up here tonight. This is a tremendous achievement for all of us in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, it's very exciting, and again, congratulations to the police department. Um, I think a few more minutes tonight, uh, to have the police chief come back up, as well as the fire chief and the public works director. Uh, as we discussed two weeks ago at the council meeting, um, one of the things we don't, we don't do enough, uh, is to recognize the first responders, uh, and the staff of the town. Uh, we thought this was a good time to have, uh, some of our department heads of the various departments, uh, talk about, uh, the efforts of their departments and make some recognitions of, uh, some of the efforts during Hurricane Tropical Storm Ida. So I'll turn it over to Police Chief Battaloro first, and then we'll go to Chief Tiller after that, and Greg O'Neill after that.
My, uh, most significant goal was obtaining accreditation, but one of my short-term goals in the police department was, uh, to recognize our employees and their tremendous efforts. Uh, for far too long, we've let their accomplishments fall by the wayside. And so tonight, you know, uh, we're always so quick to, to criticize our police. Tonight, I want to be quick to commend them. During the evening hours on Wednesday, September first, 2021, and the morning hours on Thursday, September second, 2021, the town of Westfield was severely impacted by the remnants of Hurricane Ida, which brought seven point three inches of widespread rainfall in a twenty-four-hour time period, including four point four six inches in a single two-hour time period, and resulted in unprecedented extreme flash flooding. In the twenty-four-hour time period between Wednesday, September first, and Thursday, September second, 2021, the Westfield Police Department's nine-one-one Police-Fire EMS Communication Center processed six hundred and thirty-two emergency nine-one-one telephone calls and six hundred and sixty-eight administrative telephone requests for public assistance. This for a total of one thousand three hundred telephone calls. Additionally, one hundred and twenty-one calls for service were dispatched, resulting in a deployment of one hundred and sixty-seven resources. Many streets and roadways were rendered impassable, and numerous vehicles were submerged in rapidly rising floodwaters, which rose above vehicle rooftops. The Westfield Police Department responded to and affected numerous rescues of persons trapped inside of these submerged vehicles. In many instances, members entered chest-high floodwaters, littered with floating debris, and fought strong undercurrents to remove occupants and to carry or escort them to safety. Those persons rescued were transported directly to a temporary reception center established by the Office of Emergency Management. A total of seventeen persons, sixteen adults and one juvenile, sought temporary refuge there. Of those persons, several were treated immediately upon their arrival by the Westfield Rescue Squad for exposure and other resulting injuries. All persons present at the reception center were provided with blankets, water, and snacks. Some were even provided with dry clothing. Those persons who were unable to arrange for transportation home following the receding of floodwaters were transported by members to their residence or to other places of their choosing, regardless of where that location was. This included locations well outside of Union County. The reception center remained open until approximately oh-two-hundred hours on Thursday, September second, when the last persons were transferred to a shelter at the Chisholm Community Center in Springfield, where they joined other members of their family who had been relocated there. At least thirty persons were killed in New Jersey by the remnants of Hurricane Ida, including five persons in Union County. An additional person still remains missing. Many of these persons drowned in their submerged vehicles. The extraordinary efforts of those personnel who were present for duty during the overnight hours on Wednesday, September first, 2021, are to be commended. They operated under extremely difficult and dangerous conditions, and at great personal risk, their actions undoubtedly saved lives. At the direction and by the authority of the Chief of Police, the following members are hereby presented with the Westfield Police Department's Unit Citation Award. This for their commendable individual performance during the overnight hours on Wednesday, September first, as members of an operating unit in a police cited action. With the following officers, please come up and receive your commendations. Captain John Resurka. Captain Frank Patavano. Sergeant Thomas Ostrander, are you here? Sergeant Bradford Byrne. Sergeant Byrne commanded our communications center, um, and, uh, to be honest with you, I don't know how he did it. Tremendous work there, Sergeant. Sergeant Preston Freeman, are you here? Officer Eric Poplick. Officer Nicholas Bagan. Officer Andres Jada Milo. You know, I, I will point out, Andres was not scheduled to work that night, he was working in place of an officer, and, uh, and while he was here, his home was destroyed. He lives along the river in Cranford. Um, so if that's not putting others first, I don't know what is. Officer David Went. Officer Donald Pichiano. Officer Anthony, Anthony Proconte. Another officer whose home was severely damaged, uh, while he was here at work serving others. Unfortunately, Officer Markovi Jaxx is unable to be, uh, present tonight, he was awarded his certificate earlier in the day. We'd also like to recognize two dispatchers. Dispatcher Brianna Scotto, is she here? And dispatcher Colin Scanlon, is he here? And finally, I would also like to recognize five members of the Westfield Rescue Squad who worked side-by-side with members of the Westfield Police Department during this extreme weather event, and they too shall be presented with the Westfield Police Department's Unit Citation Award. EMS Chief Tremaine Ellis. EMT Kirk Fleming. EMT Jonathan Delano. EMT James Johnson. And EMT Yogan Patel. Thank you so much.
Chief Battalora, it's a good standard here, so here's some stories about Chief Battalora and the fire department.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, on the evening of September first, Tropical Storm Ida made her way through Union County. Uh, once the emergency call started, it felt like it was never going to stop. Unlike Superstorm Sandy, this storm produced an incredible amount of rain in just a few hours. There were floodwaters in places around town that you would never expect floodwaters to be. The Westfield Fire Department performed multiple, uh, rescues from vehicles all around town, along with your typical related incidents, uh, storm incidents such as wires down, trees on houses, and flooded basements. This storm produced a total call volume for us of a hundred and fifty-plus calls for the, uh, for the time of less than thirty-six hours. For a small thirty-six-membered department, to handle that, that volume of calls is quite an accomplishment. Um, on the night of the storm, we were able to staff every piece of apparatus that we had, and we were able to respond to and mitigate every incident that we were faced with in a reasonable amount of response time. A quick story for you, I was out in the field with my guys on that night, and we were on the corner of, um, the intersection of Dorian and Raway Avenue, and I was able to accompany my engine company in rescuing a gentleman and his twelve-year-old daughter from, uh, floodwaters. The, the daughter, she was, she was in deep fear, and of course, her father was concerned about her. Once we rescued them from the floodwaters, I actually put them in my vehicle and took, and I transported them to their house in Scotch Plains. The sight, the look in this girl's eyes once she saw her home was incredible. That's all the thanks that I needed, was to show that she was, show her that she was home and she was safe. The week after the storm, I, I took the time to sit down with the members as they came in on duty, day after day, and I spoke with them, and I wanted to find out exactly how they felt about the way we performed and things of that sort. And the one common note that everyone presented to me was how they felt and how they, uh, responded to just the thanks of the Westfield citizens and the citizens of neighboring towns, and how that made them feel. So basically, what this showed me was that we can give out awards, which we are going to do at a later date, however, the majority of my guys felt just the award of seeing the appreciation that we get from you, the citizen, is enough for us. So, on that note, I'd like to thank my guys, first of all, for being there that night and doing what we do. This is what we're trained to do. Assist the citizens of this town and the citizens that visit this town, the people that visit, visit this town in an emergency situation, in danger and in need. Also, I'd like to thank the mayor and the town council for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and just, uh, one reminder about the fire department. Uh, you, uh, forgot, one of the services that we provide, um, and this happens after storms like this, uh, people don't always know this, but we, they pump out basements. And, uh, something that people don't know the fire department does, but we had many, many calls for that, and, uh, residents are very appreciative of that as well, so thank you, Chief Tiller. Greg O'Neill, on behalf of Public Works, have a few words for his department.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Mayor Brindle, ladies and gentlemen of council. Once again, I get to come to this microphone with an incredibly intense feeling of pride. What we were put through in a very short period of time as police... What we were put through in a very short period of time as police, fire, rescue, and public works is something that was certainly not expected and certainly was unparalleled. To get that kind of water in that kind of timeframe is a terrifying thing, yet we started out on September 7th cleaning up debris from people's homes and by the 17th, the entire town had been cleaned up. By September 22nd, the enormous pile of debris that was sitting at the conservation center had been completely removed. How we did that, I don't really know because it came to 460 tons of debris. If you calculate that by 2000, it's almost a million pounds in a very short timeframe. Other communities have asked us, "How'd you do it?" And well, we just simply say, "Hey, we put forth the effort and we all worked together." But we had a lot of hurdles that we faced. The depots were shutting down on us left and right, so we had to work our way into some other depot, find someplace else to get rid of the debris. And we did so. It took a lot of creative thinking and a lot of calling of certain favors, but we have great relationships and we found that to be very beneficial, especially in times of I gotta tell you, I'm downright humbled by the way our supervisory staff and our production staff handled this situation. Because when we started on September 7th, not only did we have a big mess to clean up, we had the opening day on Saturday of fall sports. We had the 20th remembrance of 911 where areas had to be perfect for that remembrance. But we also had the beautiful Night of Lights run. It all went off. It went off as if this incident didn't happen. I couldn't be prouder, I couldn't be more humbled, and I must say thank you to council for without you and your support and what you've given us over the years, we would not have been able to handle this. Thank you to the administration for everything you've done for us. Your support has been tremendous. And thank you to the Office of OEM for allowing us to expand our role here in this beautiful town of Westfield. We now know that what others run from, OEM runs towards and that's a beautiful thing to be a part of. Thank you so very much. God bless this beautiful town of Westfield.
Thank you Greg and thank you mayor and council for letting us just have a few words tonight. It's important to let the residents know how well our employees work together, especially in times of crisis and how we come together and get things done. And you know, it's easy to talk about what we accomplished, but when you look at other communities around us that might have more damage than we did and so forth, not only do we take care of our own people, our own residents, but also we do help other communities as well when necessary. So that's something that we pride ourselves in. I also want to say one last thing, just to thank the residents as was mentioned a few times tonight. The debris pickup, for example, that Mr. O'Neil talks about would not have been possible to be efficiently done if the residents didn't get their debris where it had to be. And we had a lot of back and forth with people, helped them out. That's just something that again, the residents cooperation helps us be more efficient for police, fire, and public works. But I hope you've seen tonight, we have great people that work for this town, great supervisors, great department heads, and they work very well together to get things done efficiently. So thank you again for the time, Mayor and Council.
Well, you know, I'll just add a few words in, you know, being here all the time, I think I probably get exposure, the level of professionalism demonstrated by every single employee in our municipality, which is incredible. But I think what Ida revealed was a level of resourcefulness that unlike I think I've ever seen and I haven't been here that long, but it was really quite incredible. But beyond that, the comments that I got day in and day out from residents about the personal touch that you guys provided at every single level, whether it was a story, I think, you know, Greg O'Neil and the DPW who has never done bulky waste pickup before. It wasn't just the efficiency in which you did it, but it was how you did it. And I can't tell you how many stories I got from residents who were, you know, just had suffered devastating property losses and your care, willingness to come back multiple times to make sure they were cared for, I heard from over and over again. And Chief Tiller, I was waiting for the rescue story from the rooftop because I think if there was to me, an iconic moment of really bravery is something that you guys have done, it was the rescue top and I, you know, went to visit that school personally to see what you guys had done. So it was really incredible. And for the police, I mean, what a night for you guys to be recognized, to be accredited and then to see really in action in terms of what you all did during Ida. And I'm so grateful for the representation from the State Police Chiefs Association that because you were able to articulate to the community what this accreditation means. It is a big deal and it's something that we can be incredibly proud of in terms of what you guys have and have done and how we are all represented here in the community. So just a big congratulations to all of you. It's a proud moment for our community. It's a proud moment for our residents and I can't thank you enough for all you guys have done to make us all look so good. So thank you and hats off to all of you. And I'm going to give you all one last gift. If you all want to leave, you have full permission and we will not be insulted as we move on into the business at hand. So feel free and congratulations again. I'll give you a couple of minutes to get your stuff. So Gian, before I begin, did you have any updates?
Oh, put it out. Nobody wants to hear me talk. Couple of quick updates mayor, just mostly paving related, all paving related. So just a reminder again, 14 roads or sections of road have been completed by Elizabeth Town Gas, meaning paving. Thirty-nine out of our 40 roads that we actually allocated this year under our program for paving have been completed. The last one is Willow Grove Road that right now we're working on scheduling. Willow Grove, like other, some other roads is on a school route, so we have to arrange the milling and paving around school openings and closings. Right now, we're scheduling and anticipating things to be done the week of, the first week of November when the school has a few half-days and a few days of closure due to the teachers' convention. So right now, that's Willow Grove Road is being scheduled to get that done. Some of the concrete work, handicap ramp work will be done sometime starting mid-October. So that's the last road we have on our list. Elizabeth Town Gas continues to work on paving plans. The next two items that we're working on to do paving, the grid of Paulstead, Cumberland, Downer, Drake, Horton, Roosevelt. All the home connections in that grid have now been completed. They met with our engineer and they're looking to have the next four to six weeks have the whole grid milled and paved curb to curb with striping replaced as it exists today. And so that's actually great news. In addition to that, we have the Dudley Avenue stretch, which is a long stretch. They are finishing up, they have about 26 home connections left to do on that stretch. When that is finished, they are going to be finalizing some of their details and then they also, two different contractor, but they're looking to do the first week of November there as well because again, the school closures is on a, multiple schools along that route. So Dudley Avenue is on schedule for that, you know, pending weather and other issues. But they're also waiting a part that they have to actually get in, which is expected to arrive on October 19th to put in, to decommission the old main service that they're moving away from in the ground. So we have two major paving jobs looking to be scheduled for the week of, well, Willow Grove Road and Dudley for the week of November 1st. The Paulstead, Cumberland, Downer, Drake, Horton, Roosevelt, starting in a few weeks and getting completed. In addition to that, we have other grids or other roads that are still working on getting paving schedules finalized. The Belvedere Terrace Place Sherwood Parkway and Crescent Parkway grid, Hillside Avenue by itself, that is now just about complete with the gas main work and we're trying to work out, Elizabeth Town Gas is trying to work out a relationship with Mountainside, which is part of Hillside and Mountainside. And they can, once they finalize it, they can pave the whole entire stretch of Hillside. And lastly, the Stone Lee, Westfield Avenue, Shackham Axon, Washington, Everson, and Beechwood grid, there's still some home connections to be finalized in that area. Once that's done, that'll also be up for paving. So we could have a very busy October, November until the weather doesn't cooperate anymore of paving. Lastly, Elizabeth Town Gas continues to work on beginning home connections on the two other grids. The Columbus, Grandview, Irving, Ripley, Pine, Sycamore, and Elizabeth Avenue, they are beginning the home connections there as well as the main line work, as well as Oak Avenue, Kimball Turn, Topping Hill, Kimball, Winia, Baker, Linden, Jefferson, Canterbury, and Canterbury Lane. So again, a lot of stuff. If you remember, we had unprecedented, almost 18 miles of road scheduled to be paved this year. Twelve plus miles of that is by Elizabeth Town Gas. So they have a lot of work to do, but we're getting a lot of it ready to go. So and our road paving jobs for the year expected to be completed by the first week of November. So another very productive year and anything that couldn't get done this year for some reason, whether it be gas main work, weather, will be carried over to the spring of next year like we've done in the past and be completed first thing in the spring. That's it.
Wow. Lot of road paving.
Lots of stuff.
That's a lot. So anyway, thank you all for who are still here. I do want to, tonight we do have a mandatory sign-in sheet. The purpose is that we can actually effectively contact trace if the health department is notified of COVID exposure. So if you haven't already, please make sure that your name and contact information are provided. And as a reminder, we're live on Facebook and comment is only accepted in person. And just some updates, I want to remind everybody, if you didn't see it already, that we're accepting applications for the Westfield Infrastructure Resiliency Committee, calling at work. I introduced it at our last meeting and just a reminder, this will be chaired by Councilman Havgood and Councilman Contract and it will be tasked with assessing our current stormwater-wide infrastructure and its ability to handle these storm weather events in the future like Ida, which we referenced tonight, and hopefully making short and long-term recommendations for how best to fortify it. And the only thing we ask, the work will be significant, it will be comprehensive, and it will be time-consuming. So we're ideally looking for residents, A, who have experience in local flooding issues or experienced professionally in, you know, flood management and so forth. And we would like diverse ward representation. So we, deadline is October 6th, which is next Wednesday, and we are hoping to announce the appointments at the October 12th council meeting. The good news is, there's some great new business about things that are going on downtown. There's a lot of, there seems to be a bit of energy around new businesses coming after, I think we're on the, hopefully, the end of COVID is on the horizon as we all sit here en masse, but we're all hopeful. I actually had the visit, the opportunity to visit one of our recent ones, Victoria's Cakes on Westfield Avenue, which is a new amazing French bakery, a new art gallery, Wallach Art Gallery on Elmet Street, both of them are new. You might have seen the sign for the Westfield Pharmacy on Quimby. That's scheduled to open in the next month or so. It's right next to where the new Custom Ink is and across from what the Spice Bizarre Vegan Place is supposed to open later this fall. For the ice cream lovers, we've got a new ice cream place called Surreal Creamery that's moving into the old Midtown Athletic space. They're known for their mason jar ice cream and very, I think what will be very popular is Salty Paws, which is an ice cream parlor for dogs. And yes, you go bring your dog in there, you order ice cream and they eat it in there and that is going in the former Omaha Steaks place. There's also a new place called Blissful Beauty that's coming to East Broad, which is independent cosmetics and fragrance store. They're going in the former L.A.Law space. And then also our great friends at Mimi and Hill who have a terrific designs shop on Elmer Street, they're opening a pop-up shop through the holidays for, across from Adams Tavern, which would be great. Hopefully it will be successful and they will stay. So anyway, lots of great things, a lot of new energy happening downtown, which is terrific. I do want to remind everybody, it is National Voter Registration Day. VBM vote-by-mail ballots are actually going out this week and if you have not registered to vote, you have until October 12th. And just, there's a lot, a lot of new stuff with voting this year. So I've actually convinced Tara Rowley to do a Facebook Live with me later this week or on Monday to walk everybody through what the voting process is. So please look for your yellow ballot in the mail if you're a vote-by-mail person. And there's also early voting for the first time in-person voting beginning October 23rd through October 31st. So please, I guess I implore everybody just to pay attention. Things are new. There's new polling locations if you vote early, it's not your usual place. So just please pay attention and very importantly, please remember to vote. Also, we had an Edison School Field Project, Edison School Fields Project meeting recently. Thank you for everybody that came out for that. Since then, there is a meeting of the members of the Board of Ed and the Recreation Commission to align just on next steps. And there's a meeting between the Recreation Committee and, we're commissioning the Neighborhood Advisory Group, I think, next week. But I'm going to let Councilman Katz give an update on where things stand.
Thank you very much Mayor. That's right, so since our last town council meeting, the Neighborhood Advisory Group met for the second time. We had our third formal input and feedback session on September 20th. Russ Howell from the Rec Commission gave a detailed presentation. And we also held our third public input session. The presentation addressed the many questions submitted from multiple sources, including the public input sessions, emails, town council meetings, and neighborhood advisory group meetings, as well as presented the revised conceptual proposal for the fields. The revised proposal, along with the entire presentation, are published on westfieldnj.gov under the Rec Department tab. And during the public input session, we were from nearly 30 residents. Some next steps moving forward for the remainder of 2021, there'll be a monthly neighborhood advisory group meetings with our next meeting scheduled for October 5th. The Rec Commission is planning a meeting with user groups to learn a little bit about their needs. And we are looking forward to the parking assessment from Spiegel in the beginning of December. I just want to thank all the residents that have chosen to have your voices heard. You're a very important part of this process and I would also encourage all of those interested and that weren't at the meeting to review the detailed presentation posted on the website.
Excellent, thank you. And there's lots of exciting stuff happening downtown following, and actually, you know what, why don't, before I get, why can you give a little recap of, I'm going to talk about Green Energy Week, but why don't you talk about what we just did this past weekend?
Sure, it was our first ever tour to Westfield and I think it was a huge success. We had about 60 volunteers, nearly 600 riders in our two-mile fun ride slash parade. Special thanks to resident Liz Chaco from the Rec Commission and the Green Team for organizing and the rest of the team from the Rec Commission, the Green Team, the Bike Board, and everyone else that contributed, especially the TPW, the Westfield Police Department, the EMS, and the Fire Department. So some highlights of the day were the Tour de Totz obstacle course for toddlers, was cranking all day, was awesome. The police department was also amazing. They had a bike rodeo for a little older kids and they gave out a ton of swag and a lot of helmets they gave out from the health department. Our contest winners, we had the most blinged-out bike had an awesome dinosaur skeleton on it and a Cub Scout pack took top honors for the team with the most members. Jay Cycles was there for some much safety, much-needed safety adjustments. They actually took a look at the mayor's bike. And we were lucky to have some greatly appreciated help with our traffic from the cadets and senior members of the Civic Air Patrol. So that was pretty cool that they came to help out and a lot of fun was had by all.
It was great. Yes, I wiped the cobwebs off the bike in my garage and I got to Jay's and they said, "Do you know your tire's about to fall off?" So they saved me. So anyway, it was a great, congratulations, that was an incredible event. And that's actually preceding what's coming up this weekend, which is Green Energy Week. And actually, there's one event this Wednesday night. It's partnering with the Century Central Jersey Electric Auto Association for an EV101 Virtual Information Center Sessions. It's a webinar and they're going to discuss the many benefits of driving electric, including state and federal incentives and cost efficiencies, et cetera. And there's a Zoom link on the website that you guys can find. And then this Saturday at the South Avenue Train Station, it's its first alternative energy fair. It's going to be, you can actually view electric bikes, electric vehicles, and lawn equipment and learn all about alternative energy and sustainability programs available in Westfield. It's going to have a live local band, Save Mary, as well as food offerings from some of Westfield's restaurants for attendees. So full details on that are available. I think the weather looks great, what they say on, for the weekend, so please come down. Should be fun for the family. Tomorrow, there's actually in here, at here in our community room, there is a job fair in partnership with the county. The Downtown Westfield Corporation and Chamber of Commerce is from 11 to 3. Job seekers in Union County will have the chance to explore job opportunities and we all hear about the job and staffing shortage that's happening. So it's really an aim to help employers connect with job seekers and I understand someone will be hired on the spot. So you with job seekers. And I understand someone will be hired on the spot, so you can roll online through the Union County Department of Human Services. So please. And then Girls' Night Out was rescheduled from last night, last week, to this Thursday night. So once again, please come out, Girls' Night Out, I think around 7 o'clock. And I want to thank our DWC and the downtown businesses for what is going to be a great evening, as it is every year. And then I know, we talked about paving, but there's one issue that has come up for many residents that live on Prospect Street. And for those of you that aren't familiar, Prospect Street was recently paved, and it was, and the concern is about the placement of double-yellow lines after it was paved by the, by, in a grant by the state. So the good news, I, as co-chair of the Raritan Valley Line Mayor's Alliance, I have a working relationship with the New Jersey Department of Transportation Commissioner Diane Gutierrez Sticetti. And so I actually, she was here recently, about a month ago, may recall, when we had Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg here. So I reached out to the commissioner, actually, and to get clarification on those lines and what the state would allow, and was very pleased that she said she was in the area today. And she was able to come to Prospect Street and meet this afternoon with Councilwoman Hapgood, Councilwoman Boys, Chief Badalora, Jim Gildea, and our engineer Dave Bataglia and myself. So, so she was really incredibly helpful, very generous that we had the DOT Commissioner on Prospect Street giving us firsthand information on what yellow lines mean on a street. So it was terrific. So I'm going to let Councilwoman Hapgood give you the update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just add a couple of things. We're particularly grateful that the Commissioner was able to come here to Westfield and meet with us today, take a look at the street herself, and answer some questions that we've heard from a number of residents about the striping. Just to clarify, the paving of Prospect wasn't paid for by the town, but it was paid for through the New Jersey State Transportation and Trust Fund Grant. And our town engineer, who has many, many years of experience overseeing road resurfacing, submitted the town's plans and for state approval with the understanding that you would have to follow the state guidelines for a collector road. There were not yellow lines on the road previously, so there was understandably some confusion and some concerns on behalf of the residents. The council and the mayor were not aware of this either, so we have been trying to get some answers ourselves. Today, we are very happy that the Commissioner, as I mentioned, met with us, and she's graciously offered two things. One, she will be adding State Traffic Division resources to do counting of traffic on the road. That will be something that will guide us in our decision about the striping on a going-forward basis. She offered today to put the works in motion to have that equipment installed, so we will also have that information in addition to the counting that is being done by our own equipment. And in addition, if the data determines that we have the discretion to remove the yellow lines, then the Commissioner has offered state funding to do that, which we very much appreciate. I think it's also very important to say that safety always comes first. That will always be our main priority. And if the data that we receive gives us the discretion, we're prepared to ask the state to remove the yellow lines. And I'll continue to keep the Prospect Street neighborhood updated as we undergo the next few weeks and start to receive information. I want to echo the mayor's thanks to the residents for expressing their concerns and reaching out to Councilwoman Boys, and the mayor, and myself. And again, I'm very grateful to the DOT Commissioner to get her views and also to offer her assistance.
That was pretty good service. When you talked to him, she goes, "I'll be in the area. I'll come by personally." So you don't often get that from your government officials, and that was pretty incredible. And, but anyway, we obviously will work very hard and ultimately end at the right, at the right place, I'm sure. So just moving on tonight, we have another busy agenda tonight. It includes an ordinance on second reading to address the issue of renting out private property amenities, including backyard swimming pools, which many of you have heard about, as well as the one to increase fines for biased crimes from what was previously $200 up to now $2,000 per violation. And there's some public safety items on the agenda. Existing no parking areas on Central Avenue by Washington Street and on South Avenue by Tull Parkway to create better lines of sight, adding a handicap space on Cackeyola Place, and importantly, awarding a contract to begin much-needed lighting repairs in Menduaska and Park. So is Chief Badalora, he's back there, do you want to come up and just give an update on crossing guards and car thefts? You got a busy night tonight, Chief.
First, I'd like to say, this morning, we had a stolen car from the 1,000 block of Lawrence Avenue. It's number 22. This year to date, it was unlocked with its key fob in it, in a neighborhood that has seen a number of car thefts over the last three years. To date, 22 cars have been stolen in Westfield. Every single one of them this year has been stolen utilizing a key fob. And 20 of those cars were unlocked with key fobs in them. I will say, we've computed some, some data downstairs. 1.07 million, $1.079 million worth of cars stolen this year in Westfield. And through the dedicated efforts of our Detective Bureau, 969,000 worth of cars have been recovered. So a little over a million totals, dollar value worth of cars stolen this year, and just under a million recovered by our detectives, and in particular, the one assigned to the New Jersey State Police Auto Theft Task Force. This morning's car was recovered by him within about three hours, and that will be returned to its owner, hopefully in just as good a shape as it was stolen. But we've had our most recent two-time victim, I call them our two-fers. We had a resident who had two cars stolen two weeks ago on Prospect Street, both of them unlocked with key fobs in them. The reason I tell you this is so that you can make informed decisions. I think you should know the facts that, you know, every single car has been stolen with a key fob. 91% of them with the key fob in them unlocked at the time of the theft, so that you can make informed decisions about the safety and security of your property. For the last three years, I've been pleading with residents to lock their cars. It seems to have worked with some and fallen on deaf ears with others. I've been told it's my constitutional right to leave my car unlocked with its key in it, and yes, that is your right. If you choose to leave your car unlocked with its key fob in it, then these are the types of criminal activities that you will see in your town. They are certainly capitalizing on your complacency, and this problem will not go away unless our residents start changing their behavior. We are on pace to do over 30 stolen cars this year, which is likely going to be our highest number. They don't occur proportionally throughout the year. I project we may do as high as 35. But I cannot force residents to lock their doors and to remove their valuables and to remove their key fobs. As much as I have tried with variable message boards, Nixel messages, distributing pamphlets door-to-door in affected neighborhoods, if you're not going to change your behavior, then this is precisely the type of criminal activity that you can expect in the town of Westfield. And, you know, like I said, we are certainly, certainly putting forth a tremendous amount of investigative resources towards recovering these cars. I am a strong believer in the principles of community policing. And solving crime, like stolen cars, is like any other community problem. It requires a partnership between the police and the community it serves. And I can tell you, our police officers are doing their job. And I think for the most part, many of our residents are as well, but there is still a substantial number who have not changed their behavior, and they don't seem like they will anytime soon. So, you know, unless we have a partnership where we work together and solve these problems together, this crime problem will be persistent, you know, as long as I'm the chief of police, because there's not much more we can do. Making arrests does not deter the problem. You know, I'm a strong believer in that we cannot solve this problem. We can only displace it. But right now, Westfield remains a very attractive target for property crime. So I will make one last plea again tonight, you know, before somebody gets seriously hurt and hopefully not one of our officers pursuing one of these stolen cars or confronting one of these criminals. Please lock your cars, remove your valuables, take your key fobs with you. You know, you need to toughen the targets, and as long as criminals come here and they get what they want, they're going to keep coming back. I've related a number of stories to the mayor where, you know, $7,000 in cash was stolen out of an unlocked car, $20,000 Rolex was stolen out of an unlocked car, an $1,800 pair of women's shoes was stolen from an unlocked car. These are tremendous grabs for criminals, and as long as they continue to find them, they are going to continue to come to Westfield. So I will make another plea tonight. I probably will never stop making the plea. Please lock your cars. Please remove your valuables. Please take your key fobs with you. I can tell you, we've been very successful in making arrests. A lot of that has come from our residents calling and reporting suspicious persons, and suspicious vehicles, and suspicious activities. But as long as it's easy pickings here, criminals will continue to come. And on the crossing guard matter, I do want to say that, you know, we are working very closely with ACMS, which is All City Management Services, which is now in its second year of providing services. This is a service contract that ACMS provides to the town of Westfield. They provide crossing guard services. They are not a consultant. They don't provide recommendations as to where you should or should not put crossing guards. They staff the posts that we tell them we want staffed. And as a matter of necessity, and I said this earlier at our conference meeting, I also said it two weeks ago at our conference meeting, there is a necessity for us to downsize this crossing guard program, simply because we cannot find sufficient manpower to staff all of these posts. We were at a high of 53, then 51, and now we're down at 41 crossing guard posts, with two of them being double posts. You know, ACMS has a staff to staff the 41 posts, but there is no reserve staff. There are no substitutes. And as quick as we hire guards is as quick as they leave. So it is a very, you know, there's a very high rate of attrition here with our crossing guards. There is a high sick rate among them. Many of them are senior citizens. But it is not, it never was for me a matter of trying to save the town money in recommending the reduction of crossing guard posts. It was always about the sustainability, and in essence, the survivability of the crossing guard program. It is a necessity that we downsize it. We just have too many posts that cannot be adequately staffed. We are 13 days into the school year. We've completed 13 school days, and on 22 occasions to date, we've assigned police officers to cover crossing guard posts. And that's a problem. That's putting us right back where we were when we sought out the services of ACMS. This is tying up vital emergency resources. I had a conversation with Mr. Gildea recently about one afternoon when we were on the phone and talking about a post that needed to be covered, and our officers were committed providing life-saving CPR to a gentleman who fell down a flight of stairs and wasn't breathing. And I told Mr. Gildea, we simply do not have the manpower to commit to these crossing guard posts. So reducing posts were made based on counts provided to us by the crossing guards, and there were a number of highly unutilized crossing guard posts. And we conducted in-house here a careful analysis of those posts and made some very calculated determinations as to which posts needed to be eliminated simply because they weren't being utilized. I can give you an example of two posts in Ward 2 that were covered by one officer. He would stand at the intersection and cross with the group that crossed every day and walk with them to the second intersection, because they were the only ones utilizing that post. And we had one officer covering two posts to cross, in essence, what were three kids in the morning. And, and that is not a very good deployment or allocation of your resources, especially when they've become so, so scarce. So this is really a matter of sustainability and survivability. I can tell you proportionately, we probably have more crossing guards in this town than any town comparable to our size. I've spoken to a number of chiefs, chiefs who claimed they had the most at 29 in the city of Summit, and when I threw out the number of 41, and one of them being two, you know, two crossing guard posts, they were absolutely amazed. We have, the number of crossing guards the city of Linden has, their population is 10,000 more than us, and their, their square mileage is almost double the town of Westfield. So this is really a matter of finding the locations where our crossing guards are most needed. It would be great to put them everywhere, but we can't simply staff a program of this size. And I'm certain that at the end of this school year, we will reassess this program again, and as a matter of necessity, start looking at other alternatives, perhaps starting to look at mechanization at various intersections where we put pedestrian crossing signals, because we simply don't have the manpower. Maybe we need to look at mechanical options. So, you know, I've fielded a number of complaints. I've been out. I've been making observations myself on Central Avenue, and I still strongly believe that the posts on Central Avenue are adequately controlled by, by the traffic control devices there, and that the Hawk Light is underutilized to warrant a crossing guard post. But, you know, I understand the public safety issues. We are certainly committing our resources towards the areas of schools, our police officers, and, you know, again, this is just a matter of survivability for this program, what we've done here. So, but I certainly think additional cuts may be warranted in the future, just as a matter of, we don't have the manpower to cover them.
Thank you very much. The only thing I might add is, we talk about crime, and we talk about auto thefts all the time, but I don't want to lose sight of what your department has done, is to reduce overall property crime significantly in the last three and a half years. And I think auto theft gets a lot of our time and attention because we publicize a lot, because we want our, we want to make sure our citizens are doing the right thing. But I don't want it to get lost, the efforts that you guys have put into actually reducing property crime significantly overall. So, and I think that was reflected in the accreditation tonight. So thank you for that. Okay, so now it's time to get on to the work at hand. Mrs. Rowley, do we have any advertised hearings?
Yes, Mayor, there are five advertised hearings. The first is for General Ordinance Number 2223, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance 2223, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, may or may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
Second hearing is for General Ordinance Number 2224, an ordinance amending the town code for the town of Westfield to increase fines for biased crimes. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2224, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, may or may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
Third is General Ordinance Number 2225, an ordinance amending the town code for the town of Westfield to address the rental of amenities. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2225, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, may or may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
Next one is General Ordinance Number 2226, an ordinance adopting a new agreement between the member municipalities of the Raway Valley Sewerage Authority. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2226, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, may or may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
And the last hearing is for General Ordinance Number 2227, an ordinance authorizing the termination of a certain settlement agreement dated as of September 1, 1994, between the township of Clark and the Raway Valley Sewerage Authority, the boroughs of Garwood, Kennelworth, and Roseau Park, city of Raway, the town of Westfield, and the townships of Cranford, Springfield, and Woodbridge. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2227, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, may or may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed. Councilman Dardia, please move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2223.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2223 on second reading, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mackey. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman Legrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes. The motion is carried. Councilman Parmally, please move for the adoption of code review and town property committee ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2224 on second reading, an ordinance amending the town code for the town of Westfield to increase fines for biased crimes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boys. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman Legrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes. This motion is carried.
I'd also like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2225 on second reading, an ordinance amending the town code for the town of Westfield to address the rental of amenities.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman Legrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes, this motion is carried.
All right, next, I'd like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2226 on second reading, an ordinance adopting a new agreement between the member municipalities of the Raway Valley Sewerage Authority.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boyes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman Legrippo? Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes, this motion is carried.
Lastly, I'd like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2227 on second reading, an ordinance authorizing the termination of a certain settlement agreement dated as of September 1, 1994, between the township of Clark and the Raway Valley Sewerage Authority, the boroughs of Garwood, Kennelworth, and Roseville Park, the city of Raway, the town of Westfield, and the townships of Cranford, Springfield, and Woodbridge.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Havgood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman Legrippo? Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Rendell?
Yes, this motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Conference and regular meetings of September 14, 2021? It's almost. Most by Councilman Mackey. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Dardia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Do we have any petitions or communications?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Now it's time for open discussion by citizens. Anyone may come up to the microphone and speak to the council on any subject on which we have jurisdiction. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to 10 minutes,
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Council, and thank you, police officers. And I thought it was a great presentation earlier today. My name is Eric Elstrom. I'm the president of Westfield Lacrosse at 62 Mohawk Trail. And I just wanted to give a quick summary of the Rec Commission meeting, where there was a tremendous turnout from both sides. And I thought everyone provided some great legitimate feedback to the revised plan. And just being there for the first time, and seeing the support from the neighbors, but then also seeing the support from the families that we represent, which is close to 2,000 families, that we got feedback after the dialogue around it. And a couple of things that came out, which were really concrete, and one of which is we need fields. One of the statistics that really hit hard was, our town, the size of our town, we should have eight all-purpose fields, according to the population, what I read in that thing. And all-purpose fields, when you're, when you are up to a proposal for a Board of Ed and Rec Commission joint venture, which is really impressive in its own right, I thought it was amazing, the collaboration that was going on. And it was good to hear from the, you know, from the neighbors, and the chief complaints, and there was no complaining about the need for fields. Zero. There was, there was recommendations of all grass, no lights, somewhere else. And like, to me, as someone representing these 2,000 individuals, hearing the feedback that we need to make the change was clear. And I just want to provide a little more context around why this is a good step one. And we all heard that this is only step one, because our town deserves better facilities, and one of which is the capacity, right? Eight versus two and a half, which we currently have right now, is embarrassing. And then like, the fact of sharing Board of Ed with this particular field, the Board of Ed will have it to 6 o'clock at night, or 5 o'clock at night. And then we will have, the kids of Westfield will have it from 6 to 9, let's just say. And we have a good example of this collaboration at Sid Faye Hulahan right now, which is a rec field, where there's about 40 spots in this facility, which is way too little, don't get me wrong. But the capacity of getting kids into this facility, where there's two fields, is going to be, it's already done. And I will say that, again, managing this, and trying to get our kids to play in our town, and to bring other towns into this complex that we're proposing, it just makes a lot of sense to start there. And I was pleased to see on the Rec Commission revised plan, that these lights, and I even talked to some of the neighbors afterwards, the technology of lights just hitting the field, and not having this spillage, is really important if I lived there as well. And the fact that we could use this technology to our benefit, to help these kids not have to travel, that's where my daughter is right now, not traveling to other towns to practice, and I think all the other technology aspects of improving that field are valid. Drainage, hopefully improving the actual water release out of that complex, because right now, it's not good. If you walk out onto that field, in the winter, or in the fall, in the spring, it's a, it's a rock. You might as well just have concrete on the, on the field. And grass fields, any of you guys have walked around any of the grass fields we have in this town, they are not playable most of the time. So we use them as reserve fields, and turf is the only option. When you travel to any complex, unless you go to a, like, we have a soccerplex down in Maryland we go to, beautiful grass fields. But they do not get any play on them. They shut them down all week, they allow them to play for like, four hours, and it's just, it's the reality. I mean, you go into, behind Edison right now, those fields are barely used. The football team uses them for like, two hours, and they are destroyed. So I would encourage, I would love to say that we could do grass fields, but just being a realist, and seeing what we've seen around the town, it's just really hard to execute. And when we talk about step one, if we could get two revised smaller fields, that the Board of Ed, our middle schoolers can use them during the day, you know, the JV teams don't have to walk all the way up to Tamakiwes School to go practice, there's a great collaboration between the Board of Ed, the town where we could use them, and there's a lot of talk about not using lights. Think about it, Board of Ed's going to use it till dark, then the kids can't use it. So the reality of having all-purpose lit fields for that, for that location, and it shouldn't be just behind Edison, and I live right near it, it should be maybe Tamaki, you know, maybe Tamakiwes, maybe some other locations, as we go down the road, to hopefully get to that minimum amount of eight fields, all-purpose fields. And the last thing I'll say, again, 2,000 of our, you know, our members were emailing me afterwards, because I spoke, and it was great to see the neighbors come up to me afterwards, ones that are seriously opposed to it, to better understand the collaboration that needs to happen to make it fit, because we do need to have this field. And that's it. Well, thank you very much for your time, guys. Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Greg Lamborg at 528 Grove Street. You're probably not surprised to see me. So, it's funny that I prepared this, but it actually addresses a couple of things that just came up. So, on, at the first listening session on July 14th, I outlined the three most egregious aspects of the proposed Edison project. And it would really help if I had my glasses on. The first one was that stadium lighting does not belong in any residential neighborhood in, in Westfield. The people, the thing that folks don't understand about lights, is that the lights themselves are the tip of the iceberg. They are, they are the enabler of activity such as noise, traffic, heightened safety issues, all associated with nighttime athletic events, and it's unnatural and disruptive to, to the local environment. Westfield residents around Edison, and Memorial Park, and Elm Street, and Tamakiwes Park expect peace and quiet at night. That's, that's why we live here. Even the recommendation from Branch Carter Carroll was that, and I quote, "Lighting should be first added to fields further from neighborhoods to demonstrate the limited impact before installing lights closer to neighbors." I don't think that the Edison property qualifies as being further from neighborhoods when it's bordered on three sides with residents. The second point was that no neighborhood should bear the brunt of athletic field expansion for the entire town. And I know that there's projects beyond Edison, but the mere fact that we've got Keller across the street, and now two fields, not three, going into Edison, is, is really placing an unfair burden on this part of, this part of town. And there, there are opportunities, or could be, if we expanded this letter of intent with the Board of Ed, to say, let's, let's improve multiple, multiple school fields. It doesn't have to be with turf or lights, but that would provide us with more playable hours. The, the third point was that this proposal is relying on synthetic turf, and that's a choice, but it's a choice that demands scrutiny. It's, it's an easy answer, but it may not be the right one, from the perspectives of the cost, the environment, health, and safety. Again, getting back to the Branch Carter Carroll benchmarking data, yes, we need eight multipurpose fields. But if you peel back one layer of that onion, the, the data shows that we are already over-served with synthetic fields compared to the 45 towns that we were benchmarked against. So what does that mean? If we need eight fields, and we've already got two that are turf, but we're over-served relative to the benchmark, that means that the other fields should be grass, if we're comparing ourselves to the benchmark group. It's, it's just, it's simple math, but no, we've somehow chosen that all the fields need to be turf, all the new ones, rather than looking at alternative options. So, this project is choosing to replace those six, now six acres of grass behind the school with synthetic turf, and that's inconsistent with Westfield's aspiration to be green, and to, quote, "preserve the attributes of our unique hometown character." So my, my feeling is that, is this, that taxpayers deserve to see a proper capacity study done, considering the advances in grass field design, grass varieties, organic maintenance, and playable hours. I have not been to the Maryland Soccerplex, but I have been to one out in Minnesota, that has twice the number of fields that the one in Maryland does. And these fields are phenomenal. And so if anybody doubts that grass fields can be well-maintained, and, and kept in excellent condition, and very soft and safe for play, you need to experience it. That would be my, that would be my, my, my request. And that, so what I'm suggesting is that we listen to experts here in New Jersey, as well as elsewhere, who have real-world experience dealing and, and maintaining organic, organic fields, and keeping them in good quality shape with lots of heavy play, before we allow the conventional wisdom about grass, and, and you can't maintain it, to lock us into an almost irreversible $9 million decision. So while the size of the project may have been reduced, back to the, the scope that was in the original Parks Master Plan, based on what was presented on Monday night, none of the three egregious elements of this project have been addressed. It doesn't feel like we were listened to at all. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Tim Eaton. I live on Noelwood Terrace. And, you know, what I heard earlier tonight with the first responders, the police, and EMS, and the fire, and the public works, it makes me proud to be a resident of Westfield. And I thought about, you know, some of the purposes of government, which includes protecting the rights of its citizens, keeping citizens and their property safe and secure, and establishing order, stability, and, excuse me, and peace for its citizens. What I heard earlier was terrific, and right on, in terms of these purposes. But the Edison Field Project does none of these, as far as I'm concerned. I live on Noelwood Terrace. I've been at all the meetings over the last few months, you know, I've presented, and I've heard other presenters. And I'm scared to death as to what's going to happen to our surrounding neighborhood if the Edison Field Plan goes in as what was described, even with the changes that took place at the last public meeting. We've talked about the artificial turf, and I know it was cut down from the 400,000 square feet to 250, so, 250,000. So we're certainly moving in the right direction, but I'm concerned, you know, certainly about the chemical pollutants, the high heat levels, more orthopedic injuries to the field, to the people, including children using the field. As Greg had said earlier about the towering lights, I mean, it's not just the lights, it's what it's going to do in terms of, I don't feel that that's the way we should be increasing our field capacity by just increasing the hours and going into night, which means there's going to be much more noise, congestion, excess parking, because right now, the parking at Edison is certainly not good enough for the amount of activity that will take place. And I know there's a parking plan coming in early December, but as it stands right now, I feel like it's just going to be more parked cars on surrounding streets, which is going to make it less safe, and with the extra noise from the lights at night, I'm scared to death in terms of what's going to happen. It's going to ruin the surrounding neighborhoods. And frankly, I think it would ruin any of the neighborhoods in Westfield. I, I don't want that for anybody. I am for the kids. I want them to have more field capacity, but I don't want it to do it by increasing the number of hours during the day that the fields are being used. There's got to be a better way. There must be more field space somewhere that can be used in Westfield to get the number of multipurpose fields that we need. And I'm just very nervous that we're just going down a path that's going to ruin our The Edison Field Plan might be a solution for increased field capacity, but it will cause significant problems in the surrounding neighborhoods. This plan really then becomes no solution at all, with the negative permanent impact on our residential neighborhoods. Once again, a multi-location solution without lights, and without artificial turf, is the right solution. I love Westfield, it's a great town, you guys all do a wonderful job, but this one's making me really nervous. I moved into Westfield, and the location that I'm in, I love the neighborhood, and I feel like I'm going to lose it if, if we move down this path right now. I hope we can find a different and a better way to get the field space we need, somehow improve the maintenance, or become more efficient at the maintenance, and find some way that we can improve on grass preservation, so that the, that the fields can be used more often. You know, hire a consultant that might help us be able to achieve that. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Jane Tsai. I live on 2 Normandy Drive. I've been in Westfield since 1981, and I'm a retired chemical engineer. I spent about 10 years in the 1990s in the processing of biotol rubber. It's isoprene and biotol dyeing, with a few percent of isobutylene, in styrene and benzene. It's a real good field, I'm proud I was part of it. Because of biotol rubber, the US and Allied Forces had won that on World War II, because our planes, our tankers lasted longer. The synthetic field industry is not regulated. All the things I just told you about, when you, when you ground it up, and stick it in an infill with hot weather and pounding, all those double bond and triple bond, the thing that makes it soft comes out. It's going to hurt your liver, it's going to hurt your pancreas. We won't be here to see our grandchildren suffering. So that's the infill. And then I got curious- And then I got curious about the plastic grass. What the hell is that? Well, it's even scarier. It's made of lead chromate. And there's data from samples of the Keller Field that showed lead dust. And there was issued recommendations to the Westfield people who might use the Keller Field. It says to suppress the dust on the field by wetting it down. But when you wet it down, you put lead in drinking water source. Then what do you do? There's zero tolerance in lead. We need to encourage all the individuals using the Keller Field to perform aggressive hand and body washing after playing on the field and remove the clothes that are worn on the field and take them off inside out and wash them separately. And maintain the field in accordance with the manufacturer's guidelines. But the manufacturing of synthetic field is not regulated, so guidelines are different. So I just turned 67. My kids are fine. I'm grateful for the Westfield school system. But we need to be responsible. We can't do something irreversible, irresponsible, then what? I just wanted to share that with you because our kids today in Edison goes to the field and then they go to lunch. Do they wash? Do they change? Do they shower? Please, think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Smith, 605 Westfield Avenue. Apologize for being late. I was with my son in Edison at soccer practice, the only field that he could play on tonight because we don't have fields that are available after 6 o'clock in darkness. I just want to respond real quickly. Heard Mr. Elfstrom talking about a beautiful soccerplex in Delaware, grass fields, 30 of them. Facility's gone bankrupt three times. The only reason it survives is they have a private benefactor that donates $2 to $3 million every single year to keep it going above and beyond the public and private side of it. So the fields are beautiful, yes, but very, very, very costly to maintain. If you research those large grass facilities, they don't survive because of the main reason. They have to be taken out of use. And while maybe 30 fields, they're only using 12 every other weekend. And these are facilities that are for profit, too. They're also generating hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue. They're renting them out to towns and teams from all over the country. They're sort of set up as a destination. We're obviously not going to do that in Westfield. With regard to the Edison Project, I was at the Rec Commission meeting, had an opportunity to listen to some of the changes. As I told you the last time I was here, I'm all for tearing down Edison and adding more fields so that we can get the full eight multipurpose fields immediately and allow the kids to actually have a place to play after school. Because unlike some of the people that got up and objected and actually raised as a bad idea that there might be pickup games with children showing up to fields and playing outside as a negative, I think that's a positive. One of the reasons many of us moved to this town to raise our children is to give our children a place to go, to have a neighborhood where our children can ride their bikes to after school and play. Unfortunately, right now, our schools don't have fields that are playable like that. I think many of you have walked the grounds. They're hard. One of the things I didn't really appreciate is when grass fields turn effectively into clay, they create sheeting risks. I had no idea that part of many, or part of the flooding problems that occur behind Edison were as a result of the condition of the grass field. I didn't know that was a thing. I just assumed grass sucked up everything. I didn't realize that over time. That's not the case. And that was something that was good for me to hear from experts that have already talked to the town and have been involved with this town for three years on the Master Parks Plan and going through that process. So while I appreciate that there are people that have very specific goals, and that is zero turf, zero lights in our entire town, it's not really realistic for where we are today. Our town and our rec programs are no longer run by the town. They are run by 501(c)(3)'s nonprofits. They are run by parents of the town. They don't get paid. We volunteer our time. We coach. We have to get certified by the state at our own personal costs. We have to take first aid and response courses. We become mandatory reporters when it deals with sexual abuse and things along those lines. We do all of that because we want to help our children. Now, we're not up here ever advocating to do something that's harmful for our children. If we believed that adding a turf field to the town would be harmful to the children at large, that would be pretty, pretty bad of us as people who volunteer our time. But these are also our own children that we're asking to put these fields for. We're certainly not up here advocating to poison our own child, right? We've done the same research that your experts did that recommended this. So at this point, I think the Edison Project is a good first step. Is it enough? No. Gets us two more, gets us to the four of the eight that we're supposed to have from a multipurpose standpoint. My kids don't play football. They never have, but the fact that I've driven through Tamaki's at 5:00 at night and seen parents' cars lined up along Tamaki's Park shining their headlights into it as if this is the Legend of Bagger Vance and we're playing on the 18th green when the sun went down in 1920, it's pretty sad. You know, our kids, we put on the back of their uniforms, best field. Well, it's worst field because we have no fields. So when we're talking about this, it's time to move forward. And I implore this council to keep taking those steps forward. You've been voted into these positions and elected for us to make decisions. We can respectfully disagree on a lot of different things, but on this one, I think I'm aligned with many people. I wish, I wish you the best. I hope you keep moving forward. I thank the Rec Commission for everything it's done. And if any of the DPW members are here and the police, last time I was before the council, I thanked you. You actually helped me with my house post-flooding, so thank you again for everything. I thought I watched earlier from my car, the presentation, I thought that was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 528 Grove Street. I am here this evening to talk about the Edison Multipurpose Fields Update, which was presented on September 20. As an art teacher in the Westfield Public School District, I have had the privilege of getting to know hundreds of children from all across Westfield. The one thing they have in common, they deserve to play on athletic fields that are safe for them and do not contribute to the climate change crisis. The updated EIS field proposal does not meet this criteria. On June 15, a Spiegel representative presented drawings that depicted various options for installing synthetic turf fields at Edison Intermediate School, including drawings that are labeled Phase 1. If you were to place Phase 1 drawings side by side with the drawings that were presented last week and looked at them with a critical eye, you would see that the new scaled-back field proposal appears nearly identical to the Phase 1 drawings. The only differences are that the new version includes two extra light towers for a total of nine, and there is a prefabricated restroom facility instead of the original cinder block building. This means that all of the concerns that I raised when I stood before you on August 10th and again on September 14th were not addressed and continue to exist. I realize that some people may view this to be a harsh assessment, and I do apologize for that because I am certain that there were many volunteers, including some of you, who had good intentions and devoted countless hours to finding a solution to Westfield's shortage of playable athletic fields. It is possible that some members of the Rec Commission assumed their roles after the Parks Master Plan had been completed and did not have the opportunity to influence the criteria on which the plan was based. In other words, they were not able to state that the plan must be in keeping with Westfield's Green Building Code, which asks, does the site minimize the heat island effect? Sustainable Jersey, which awarded the town of Westfield the prestigious Silver Certification, identifies synthetic turf fields as heat islands and advises communities to use natural grass for future construction. It also appears that Branstad or Carroll was not apprised of Westfield's guiding principles, which include, "We will commit to sustainable practices that promote social equity, environmental health, and economic prosperity. It is not equitable to place lit athletic fields of any size in the middle of a residential neighborhood." On September 20, we were shown diagrams of LED light towers and were assured that this technology enables pinpoint accuracy and will significantly diminish any neighborhood impact. While it might be true that the lights will not be directed into homes, residents will be subjected to the unnatural glow and glare as the lights reflect off the turf. Anyone who has driven past Oak Ridge Park after dark will know exactly what I am referring to. Until the technology exists to envelope athletic fields and cars with a cone of silence, residents who live near lit fields will be subjected to the sound of coaches shouting, whistles blaring, athletes yelling, spectators cheering, car doors slamming, and motors revving. And all this will occur after dark, when children should be sleeping and adults are entitled to peace and quiet and some respite from the outside world. The EIS update that was presented on 9/20 also highlighted the premise of "good faith, good neighbor" and stated, "Both the Rec Commission/Town and the BOE have a strong track record across administrations of being good partners and good neighbors in a very densely populated and developed town." That statement does not match with my experience. Excess noise has been a longstanding issue for the residents who live in the vicinity of Keller Field. The worst offenders are the sports leagues, who use the field when it is not being used by high school teams. Westfield teams show up with boomboxes, blast the neighborhood with unwanted sound. They turn the P.A. system up so high that there is no escaping the noise, even with all the doors and windows closed. I have consistently mentioned this to every politician of every stripe who has knocked on my door. Their response has consistently been that Keller Field is a Board of Ed property and is not under the town's jurisdiction. Who will be responsible for the excess noise when a BOE property is leased to the Town Council? Speaking of noise and disturbing the peace, when Carlton Avenue residents were subjected to unwanted noise and activity from a pool being rented by the hour, you responded quickly by enacting an ordinance to prevent that activity from continuing to occur. Yet all indications are that you are perfectly willing to erect stadium lighting in residential neighborhoods that happen to be located next to schools and parks. Please explain to me how that is equitable. Last week, we were informed that the updated field plan would leave 40% of the EIS field as natural grass, which would enable EIS students to have a green area for gym classes and recess, instead of having only turf for those activities, as was the case with the original plan. If you look at the new Spiegel drawing with a critical eye, you will see that the only remaining natural grass is on the varsity baseball field, which is surrounded by a chain link fence and is at the furthest corner away from the cafeteria doors. What is the likelihood of EIS students having enough time after they finish their lunches to head over to that strip of grass? The chain link fence is waist-high, which suggests its purpose is to keep people off the grass, not to contain foul balls and home runs. The revised Edison Athletic Field Proposal also does not address the many environmental concerns that have been raised by myself and other concerned Westfield residents. Crumb rubber and alternative infill materials break down over time, and more needs to be added to prevent athletes from experiencing concussions and other injuries. Synthetic turf fields wear out and need to be replaced every eight to 10 years. The worn-out plastic grass backing material, crumb rubber, and alternative infill materials are not readily recyclable. In fact, most worn-out synthetic turf fields end up in landfills. It is not equitable to create a mess and expect future residents, many of whom are children now, to bear the burden of cleaning it up. As I shared two weeks ago, the New England Journal of Medicine and over 200 other medical journals worldwide published an editorial message requesting emergency action to limit global temperature increases, restore biodiversity, and protect health. Reducing the size of the synthetic turf field from 400,000 square feet to 250,000 square feet does not change the fact that ripping up nearly six acres of natural grass fields and installing 250,000 square feet of petroleum-based synthetic turf fields is in direct opposition to what the world's clients, climate scientists are recommending. The manufacturing, installation, service, and disposal of synthetic turf fields generates carbon dioxide in addition to other greenhouse gases and pollutants, which have been linked to rising global temperatures. The plastic grass blades and backing are made from low-density polyethylene, which offgasses methane when exposed to the sun's rays. The offgassing continues after sunset and likely over the life of the synthetic turf field. Methane is a greenhouse gas, which is 21 times more potent than carbon dioxide. Climate scientists draw a strong correlation between rising global temperatures and the relentless heat waves and deadly fires that occurred on the West Coast and the severe tropical storms like Hurricane Ida, which caused devastating flash floods in Westfield throughout New Jersey and the eastern portion of the United States. A study of 10,000 young people from 10 countries, including the United States, was recently released and will be published in The Lancet, one of the world's oldest and best-known medical journals. It revealed that the world's youth are extremely worried about climate change and feel betrayed by their government's failure to cut carbon emissions. Caroline Hickman, a psychotherapist and lead author of the study, said, "The study paints a horrific picture of widespread climate anxiety in our children and young people. They have good reason to be anxious." On Sunday, The Washington Post reported on a study which compared the risks faced by previous generations to the number of extreme events today's children will witness in their lifetimes. According to the study, today's children will live through three times as many climate disasters as their grandparents, creating what the lead author of the study, Wim Theory, refers to as "the intergenerational inequality of the climate change crisis." Sue Terrell, the editor-in-chief of the International Nursing Review, said, "As our planet faces disasters from climate change and rising global temperatures, health professionals everywhere have a moral responsibility to act to avoid this." I would amend that statement, too. As our planet faces disasters from climate change and rising global temperatures, elected representatives at all levels of government, including small towns, have a moral responsibility to act to avoid this. I hope that you will act by installing organically maintained natural grass athletic fields without lights throughout the town of Westfield. I recognize that this will not be an easy task, but it is doable, and there are residents and experts in grass athletic field management who are willing and able to help you make it happen. Imagine how wonderful it would be to know that you played a role in mitigating the climate change crisis and in doing so, set an example for towns, not only in New Jersey, but throughout the country and even around the world. Think about it. It would just be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing none and no further comments. I close this portion of the meeting. And once again, just want to thank the residents. Obviously, there's a lot of passion on both sides, and as we've said repeatedly at the Edison meetings, we all agree that we need more fields. It's just a process of how we get there. It's been an intractable, intractable problem in our town for over 20 years. So clearly, if there was an easy solution, it would have been solved already. So I hope you understand where we sit. We really are trying to do what's in the best interest of everybody, and there's going to require compromise on every side. And there's still a long way to go, but I hope that nobody questions the integrity and the intent of what it is we're trying to accomplish. And like I said, it would have been solved already if it was an easy one. So I think, as Councilman Katz mentioned, you know, there's still lots of information to be had and to be gained, and hopefully more opportunities to listen, particularly through the Neighborhood Advisory Group. And we'll continue to... Next, reports to standing committees. The Finance Policy Committee, Councilman Hapgood.
Thank you again, Mayor. I have 11 resolutions that I'd like to move as a package. The first, a resolution authorizing the CFO to refund Recreation Department fees. The second, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant to refund street opening cash bond. The third, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant over overpaid taxes in 2021. The fourth, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for 2019 pursuant to the Tax Court of New Jersey. Five, a resolution authorizing the tax collector to participate in the electronic tax sale. Six, a resolution to approve insertion of special item of revenue in the municipal budget, a plug-in America EV/e-bike event, which is supporting the Alternative Energy Fair this weekend. A resolution authorizing adoption of personnel policies and procedures manual. Eight, a resolution authorizing an affordability assistance grant pursuant to the town of Westfield's affordability assistance program for a tenant of an affordable housing unit in 501 South Avenue Apartment 210. Nine, a resolution authorizing an affordable assistance grant pursuant to the town of Westfield's affordability assistance program for a tenant of an affordable housing unit. That's 501 South Avenue Apartment 211. And 10, a resolution authorizing an affordability assistance grant pursuant to the town of Westfield's affordability assistance program for a tenant of an affordable housing unit. This is 501 South Avenue Apartment 213. And the last, a resolution authorizing an award of contract for electrical repairs at Mindewasken Park.
May I have a second?
Second.
By Councilman Katz. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next, Public Safety Transportation Parking Committee, Councilman Dardia.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move General Ordinance Number 2228 on First Reading in ordinance to amend the code of the town of Westfield, Chapter 13.
May I have a second?
Second.
By my Councilman Boyes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Palmerly?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brendel?
Yes. This motion is carried. Next is Code Review and Town Property Committee, Councilman Palmerly.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to move for adoption of a resolution to approve a children's amusement device license.
May I have a second?
Second.
By Councilman Katz. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. And last is Public Works Committee, Councilman Katz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move for the adoption of a resolution to award a contract for the 2021 leaf collection program.
May I have a second?
Second.
By Councilman Dardia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion has carried. Any clarifications before we adjourn? Any updates? Terrific. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So must.
By Councilman Dard- what's your name?
Mackey.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Palmerly, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. This meeting is adjourned.